And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Roxbury was given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act as follows. On December thirty first, twenty twenty four, notice was emailed in fact to the Delaware Record, the North Star Letter, your West Morris reporter and published in the Delaware Record. Notice shall also remain posted throughout the year on the bulletin board in the municipal building.
Thank you, roll call.
Councilwoman Albrecht, Councilman Carey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Crowley.
Here.
Councilman De Filippo.
Here.
Councilman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Riley.
Here.
Mayor Patillo.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. This brings us to presentations, award, et cetera. Our first presentation for the night is one that I always love to give out. And I think Roxbury does an amazing job with creating and nurturing Eagle Scouts in our in our community. We've had quite a few come through this year already, and I'm looking forward for the rest of the year to see how many come through. Tonight with us, we have Anthony Rosnoy, who's, I'm going to have come up and talk about his project, but I'm excited to meet with him tomorrow at his project so I can learn a little bit about it and learn a little bit more about Anthony. Does anybody else on council wish to say anything about?
Well, as usual, we always like to, the council always likes to remind everybody that Eagle Scouts don't just drop down tweets. They're formed in a community and raised by adults who influence their lives. So we'd like to take a second moment to congratulate those adults who influenced this Eagle Scout Scout.
All right.
Congratulations.
Anthony, come on, come join. This is Deputy Mayor Crowley. So Anthony, tonight, I'm going to present to you a certificate of recognition. Tomorrow, I'm looking forward to going and meeting with you at your project. And then on Sunday, I'm really looking forward to attending your Court of Honor. I'll present to you just a mayor's podium at the chief. Would you mind telling everyone a little bit about your project?
So I did a trailhead for the new trail in Mount Arlington, right across from Decker Middle or Decker Elementary School. It was supposed to go in last year, but Mount Arlington is slow with their progress. We've been counting them the whole year to try and get this trailhead in to the ground. So I think we're going to have to do another Eagle project to fix my Eagle project because it's been so long. But it's definitely doing it with all the boys and getting to lead them and getting to be with them was amazing and it was one of the best experiences I've had in my life.
Excellent. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I have a request.
Sure.
Can I have all the Boy Scouts come on?
Come on up.
Absolutely. Take a picture with Anthony and all the people that were in for lunch in his life.
Yeah. Get up to your old timers.
You know, these scout masters here, amazing men, and I actually want them to be an Eagle Scout. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good job. See you tomorrow. Thank you.
This moves us to our next presentation, the proclamation, Office of Mayor, Township of Roxbury, New Jersey, National Native American Heritage Month, November twenty twenty five. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous peoples. And whereas the contribution of the Native Americans have enhanced the freedoms, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of the rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas the Lenni Lenapi who inhabited our area and lived on the Suckasuna Plains are an important part of our township's history. And whereas Native Americans, Native American Awareness Week began in nineteen seventy six and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of nineteen ninety, designating the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, and educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now, therefore, I, Sean Patillo, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor, Township of Roxbury, do hereby proclaim November as National Native American Heritage Month in the Township of Roxbury and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed, Sean Patillo, Mayor. Tonight, we have Sue Anderson and Linda Smith here to accept this proclamation. Okay. Come on. Kim Armstrong is here too. She says she will be here. Come on. So thank you so much. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes. If, I always have something. Oh, on this side. Okay. All right. We'll get together. We're part of the Fairmont chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and we try to honor the indigenous people, the Native Americans, and so forth. But if you're not familiar, in Suckasuna, behind the Presbyterian Church and the cemetery, there are Lenni Lenapi Indians that are buried there. Back in nineteen sixty, when an addition was put on the church to connect the church and the chapel, that's when they found the bones. And there was bones of a seven-foot-tall Indian chief. And of course, everything had to stop, they had to come and so forth. But there is a lot of history of them in this area. And of course, along the Delaware River, they always went where there was water and good soil for planting and hunting and so forth, which we used to have a lot more of it around here, but we still have quite a bit. So we do have a lot of it in the area. So please do. Thank you so much.
All right. So before I read the next proclamation, I wanted to read a letter that we received about two weeks ago now. I wanted to reach out and express our thanks for the exceptional work, service, and community outreach that the Roxbury Township Fire Department, Roxbury Township Fire Prevention Department, and Emergency Medical Technicians provided our Cub Scout Pack again this year. Once again, John Romeo directed the entire Roxbury Fire Department, Fire Prevention Department, and EMT group to provide a two-hour scout safety night. The event on October seventh, twenty twenty five, divided PAC fifty-four into four groups, each attending a separate safety station. These stations covered first aid, CPR, water safety, how to use fire extinguishers and fire hoses to put out a fake fire in the barn, and home fire prevention. This exciting, hands-on, educational approach to safety made a lasting impression on all twenty-five scouts, ranging in age, scouts ranging in age from kindergarten to fifth grade. It provided them with knowledge to be, to not be afraid of first responders, the ability to be aware of their surroundings, take first steps to save lives, and to be prepared for emergencies that may happen at home while camping, boating, or swimming. We are looking forward to continuing our friendship with the first responders of Roxbury in coming years. The Roxbury Fire Department, Fire Prevention Department, and EMT are a testament to the greatness of Roxbury, and we appreciate their dedication to serve our town. Thank you, Cub Scout PAC fifty-four. This is just. I think they hit the nail right on the head with this last paragraph here, that, you know, you guys are a testament to the greatness of Roxbury. Your volunteerism, you know, the time away from your families, everything that you dedicate to Roxbury, and not only Roxbury, but I also want to thank you for your support in Dover last past weekend. All three companies were there, right? Thank you, guys. You guys are running in when people are running away. And, you know, without you guys, you know, I don't even know where we would be. So thank you, guys, for that. I couldn't be prouder to read the next proclamation for National First Responders' Day. Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, Township of Roxbury, New Jersey, National First Responders' Day, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Whereas first responders, including public work, professionals, firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, nine eleven operators, paramedics, and other emergency personnel, stand on the front line of our community, selflessly serving and protecting the citizens of the Township of Roxbury in times of crisis. And whereas first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats. And whereas it is the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Township of Roxbury to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public work and other first responder efforts in their respective communities. And whereas, as of twenty nineteen, the U.S. Senate has included language recognizing public works alongside fellow other first responders. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Township Council of the Township of Roxbury that October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, is designated as National First Responders' Day. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies, paying tribute to our public work, first responders, alongside law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, nine eleven operators, and other emergency personnel to recognize the substantial contribution that they make in protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life. Signed, Sean Patillo, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. All right. That brings us to item five, a couple of minutes, on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, a motion. Any discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Carey.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crowley.
Yes.
Councilman De Filippo.
Yes.
Councilman Hall.
Yes.
Councilman Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Patillo.
Yes. This brings us to our first public portion. Does anybody in the audience wish to be heard on any topic? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Of course. Anderson, Forte, Kemble Avenue, Suckasuna, New Jersey. And I just want to promote a few things that are coming up. We also like to honor our veterans in November. So on November eighth, Saturday, at two o'clock, I have flyers, or if you need any, for having a veterans concert at the Presbyterian Church. It's a combination of the church and the DAR are sponsoring this. There's going to be vocal, instrumental, and shine music. It's all patriotic and we honor all the veterans. And we'll be honoring Donald Seeger, who's been, is going to be a hundred and two. We don't know whether he'll get there or not, but he lives in World War Two with the Navy. So we're going to be saying a few words about him. But we'd love to have you come. And afterwards, of course, there's cooking some coffee, so always something to live on. But we'd love to have you come. Also, we also do wreaths across America in December, December thirteenth, a Saturday also, we put a wreath on all the veterans' graves in Suckasuna, both the Methodist and Suckasuna Cemetery, and also the Pleasant Hill one over on Hillside Avenue. And we now have, we found about forty that we hadn't found before, so we now have seven hundred and three. So if anyone would like to donate, we're about two hundred and seventy-five short on wreaths, and we do like to put wreath on all the veterans' graves. So if anyone, I have a form that you can donate some wreaths. But also, you can come that day and help put the wreaths on the graves. And also, we have a ceremony in the Presbyterian Church. Beforehand, you can have rolls and bagels and coffee and everything, depending on how cold it is. And then afterwards, we also have a late lunch. So that's a good day. And to help raise money for these wreaths, we all like Joe's Pizzeria on Forty-sixth and Kenville. But if you go November thirteenth, I have a slip, if you give it to them, they'll give wreaths fifteen percent of the bill so that it can go towards buying more wreaths. So that's another way you can contribute to it. Thank you for letting me do my advertisements.
And that was the helping by chance. Do you have digital versions of those?
Um, yes, we do.
Can you email them to me?
Sure.
The Joe's and the wreaths?
Yes. In fact, Kim Armstrong will be doing that. Because she has them on her computer. So yes, she'll do it. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Hello, my name is Chris. This weekend was the county sheriff's program.
Are you going to take away my thank you to you?
No.
Okay.
Where conversations with Kellyanne, it's always a wild card. You never know who's going to show up to volunteer in new different areas. This past weekend, I took care of several parts of shipping and ramps to Landing Road. What I wanted to share with you this evening, that I had a great conversation with the County Sheriff's Department. The SLAT program is back, the Sheriff's Labor Assistance Program that, for county roads and some of our township roads. You guys have been speaking up there, and they came to school for the summertime and so forth in labor. But the SLAT program was shut for a little more than a year, but it's back. They're only working on Saturdays and Sundays right now, but we could go seven days a week if you request, as requested. And so since many of you sit on different commissions and committees, I wanted to extend to you that from my conversation today. County roads, like Landing Road, Burshere Valley Road, Mount Arlington Boulevard, Hillside is a county road. Kellyanne always talks about how there's so much on Burshere Valley Road to be picked up, but it's a county road, and all it takes, you know, years ago, when they were going seven days a week, it's just a phone call. And even if we get them in one time, and you'll have the three hundred and sixty-five or so days in the calendar year, it's something. So we're not always relying on, you know, rolling the dice for who shows up to volunteer on the twice-a-year cleanups. So SLAT's back, and the environmental commission folks, you know, you see stuff, and if anyone sees fit, it's just a call to go to SLAT for the Sergeant Ryan. I'm not going to say it's not.
Yeah, we'll tell them. We used to do a lot of that.
Yeah. So like I said. I don't realize the importance of that.
Yeah, but it's nice because they shelved it for a little over a year because of man power, you know, reissuing and focusing on other things. But it's back, you know, it's just a couple days a weekend.
Bail reform, right?
Yeah. They'll be back to seven days a week, you know, as we get up to the government demands and get going for a year.
Really helpful information on Anthony. Of course, we use them heavily in the past. Joe, could you reach out to them and see what criteria, where there's opportunities for us to utilize that service? Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Anybody else in the public which should be heard on any topic?
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm Jim Froy. I live in Roxbury. I'm up in Ledford section. I just had a question, and I noticed that as part of the subjects for tonight is seventeen twenty-five ordinance for field surveillance camera registry. We might be discussing what was the logics behind establishing that registry this evening?
I can say it. So we're going to pull that ordinance when we get to it.
Okay. But you'll be discussing?
We will. When it's time for us to vote on that, we will have a discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? All right, I closed public. This brings us to reports to council liaison, representatives, council committee, new business, old business. I will start off with a statement. You may notice in our agenda today, we have a resolution appointing our new township manager. So I'll start with a statement on that topic. So I want to start off by extending our council's sincere appreciation to the township staff for their continued diligence, focus, and patience as we navigated through this period of transition in township leadership. Your dedication to serving the residents of Roxbury never goes unnoticed and continues to be the foundation of our community's success. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Joe DiArco, our interim township manager, for his services. Throughout your tenure here, you never hesitated to take the reins of Roxbury and continue to move it forward. You consistently recognized and commended the hard-working staff of Roxbury, and speaking with them, they appreciated having you here too. So Joe, everybody knows Joe's last day with us will be November fourteenth, as we transition to our permanent township manager. So thank you very much, Joe, for everything you did for us. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Joe. He's had a put up with me on a few things. So I do appreciate it, and you really put in a lot in a short amount of time because, you know, fair enough, and I do appreciate it.
It's a pleasure.
Anyone else? All right. So after an extensive search, as we look forward here in Roxbury, I'm pleased to announce the appointment of John J.J. Murphy as Roxbury's new township manager, effective November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. J.J. brings with him more than twenty years of distinguished executive leadership in government services. He currently serves as the Assistant County Administrator for Public Safety in Pasco County, Florida, and has previously held leadership roles in Palmdale, California, Hops, New Mexico, and Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. A lifelong public servant since graduating college in nineteen ninety-three, J.J. also served our nation as a U.S. Air Force ROTC, U.S. Air Force, and U.S. Air Force Reserves, achieving the rank of major. J.J. and his wife are proud parents of five daughters, ages fifteen to twenty-five, and along with their family dog Raider, will soon be making Roxbury their new home. Council is excited to have J.J. come on board with us. His expertise, skill set, and character should be a great addition to the township's already amazing staff. When he arrives, please take the time to extend a warm Roxbury welcome to him and his family as they become part of our communities, our school, and our way of life here in Roxbury. So just wanted to make the statement. We're excited to have him come here, and we really look forward to his start next month. Moving on to my next topic, we had Clean Communities Day this past weekend, and on behalf of Kellyanne Keys, she's our Clean Communities Coordinator. I'd like to thank all the volunteers, the Adopt a Spot participants, and township staff for their participation this past weekend. They're still waiting for final numbers because there's two spots that just have to finish up next weekend or this coming up weekend. But we had twenty groups. One group came from Fairfield, Coxville, came from Fairfield to help clean up our community. So if you ever have the opportunity, Coxville, thank them for what they did. And I have a special thank you for Anthony. As I was driving around in our community, visiting different stops, I saw one man out on the ship and port exchange, cleaning up bags and bags of garbage. For two days, I saw him out there. Anthony, thank you so much for volunteering your time on your own and going out there and doing that. It really means a lot to the community that we have such great members of our community and great residents that live here. So thank you, Anthony. I appreciate what you did. So we have preliminary numbers of what was picked up. I don't know if this includes your pickup, but right now, we have one thousand two hundred and seventy-five pounds of litter and debris that had been removed from our parks and roadways here in Roxbury. And keep in mind, we do this twice a year. You know, so that was six months of garbage here in town, you know? If you see something, ask someone to pick it up, you know, like, have pride in our community. And don't be afraid to ask someone to have pride in our community.
Go pick it up yourself.
I have.
I do all the time.
All right.
Leave it better than you found it.
Couple more things. One, Happy Halloween. I know Halloween is this weekend, so please just be safe out there. Please be on the lookout for kids. We're going to have a storm on Thursday, and Friday is going to clear out. I'm sure the kids are going to be anxious to get out there. It will not be. And it's a Friday this year, so anticipate more kids being out there doing it and staying out a little later than they may during the week. And then the last thing I have is today, today is my nineteenth wedding anniversary. So I would like to thank my wife for sharing me with the community that we both love so much. So thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Follow that.
How do I follow that? A couple, again, first responders, the volunteers. What makes this community is all volunteers, and I think you just heard from the mayor, between picking up garbage, people putting their time into teach the Cub Scouts, going to Dover and other places, that's what makes this community, I think, fantastic. Second, I want to thank Joe again, too. We never felt like we didn't have a township manager. He jumped in and he kept the ball rolling for sure, and he stayed on top of stuff. Thank you very much. Shout out to Steve Sinista, Delle Avenue was paved this past week. No small undertaking. There's a lot of businesses, there's people who live on that road. I think it all went smoothly. It's fantastic. We did have an EDC meeting tonight. Couple of things I just want to get the council aware of. First is that we had talked a couple of months ago about submitting a grant for fifty thousand dollars to put in like a shell, like we did at Delle Avenue. That has been submitted. Joe helped us with that. And then we're waiting to hear from that grant. Two is on Veterans' Day, Steve Sinister Group is going to be pulling some of the veterans' banners. banners. We also, EDC has twelve of the two hundred and fifty-year banners that will go up and place in selected areas, so you'll see some of those coming up. Third is that the EDC has, as some other committees in town have websites, EDC is going to work with Rob Conken and move over to Civic Plus, and one of the things that I'm pushing very hard is Civic Plus is one group of ways to build websites, the township, I believe the police department, some of the fire departments are under Civic Plus, really trying to get everybody under the same pieces so that when changes have to be made, different people in different committees, we're all using the same tools. EDC did have a website, it was built on, and a lot of people look at it, but we need someone also to keep updating it. So what we're doing is moving that over to Civic Plus this year, and I encourage all the different groups to try to get into Civic Plus, so we have one rule for one set of rules to go do it. Makes jobs a whole lot easier. That's all that I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilman Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you and a real channel, and being quite frank with you, you know, your advice has been invaluable, so appreciate all your help. We had a number of meetings, meetings of us, housing committee, another one, I'm sure Jim and Bob will get into that, I think we also have a discussion regarding that a little bit later on today. We had the two hundred and fiftieth meeting last night, we're pressing forward with planning and events associated with that, so stay tuned, we'll be able to provide you more information in the future. The EDC participated in the floor cleanup and took care of Horseshoe Lake. I can't even begin to tell you how much stuff we got off the ground. The good news is we cleaned it up significantly. The bad news is, is, you know, everybody's gonna pitch in, folks. I, I make this statement every single year, there's no reason for some of the trash at Horseshoe Lake, there really is not. There are plenty of receptacles, just picking up and putting in the garbage pit when you can. Went to Rotary, they were instrumental in getting us the NJAC EDC award, so I wanted to bring that to them and did. Our football team made playoffs, so yay for them.
Yes.
I think they have a home game for it, what, this Friday?
Yes. That's right.
Okay, so we have an opportunity, it's a lot of fun, not only do we make it, but we have, we have a home game, so I think that's a real positive thing. Keep in mind, these, these kids were in a really good spot last year, so good coaching effort to get them back to where they are. Our, people don't realize it, but we have a middle school girls soccer team who is undefeated, playing in the finals tomorrow in Morris County, so wish them all the luck in your game tomorrow. And Brett, thanks for all you do, and Steve, you know, getting the fields ready for those girls, they're very, very excited about tomorrow. One thing, Joe, if you could help us out, is, is an update on the water extension project in the Ledgewood area, if you could find out exactly where we are with that, because this has been going on for quite some time. We had provide the state with some specific diagrams and some additional information. I'm not sure if they still need additional information from us, we're waiting on them, they're waiting on us, I don't know where we stand on that. So if you could just find it afterwards, give us some feedback, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Then we have the meeting last week, and I think that went well also, so that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Riley?
First of all, we did have yet another Fort Worth Housing Committee meeting this week. We do need to have an executive session tonight to briefly, very briefly discuss, not a lot to change, but move toward guidance in direction potentially, or some hearing dates have come up, so we'll discuss that, sorry.
I'll just let my wife know that I'll be home. Hey, Grand's first dinner.
Hey. I'm good. I mean, you're not taking us out? The planning boards heard, we have another business coming into town that we're happy to hear about, Thomas. They had their first planning board hearing, much further along than Popeyes is already. So hopefully, it'll be up and running in as little as eight months from now. The last thing I have is, there. This past weekend, the New Jersey Marchant Band Directors Association held regionals, and Roxbury not only won their class two A, but they competed against eighteen other bands and won best overall for music, effect, visual, and total grand champion.
Wow.
So, and that's going to the states, which is this weekend. So we're looking forward to that. Gee, maybe I could call on you a favor if we win that thing?
Sure.
So, and that's it for that.
You said yes, you were a little favor.
Too clear.
I don't want to take it.
I'm getting myself in trouble, I try to help. So if I can help, I hope.
Yeah, just, well, I'll tell you.
Councilman Riley, last question?
Yeah.
Is it, I, I learned this stat two weeks ago, is our band still undefeated for the past three years in their judging circuit?
Correct. They've been undefeated in their class. This year, there's been one band that succeeded us in, in, outside of our class. We're used to joining the grand champion as well, but we, and we beat Verona all the time, I just want you to know that.
Shout out to five.
A party gift.
Shout out to four.
So yes, we have remained, this, this year, we fall into second place for grand overall in our, in our league, so yes, we remain undefeated for three years.
Excellent.
We've been our, we've been our class, and this past week, we beat that one team that has been beating us in West Orange, and beat them hand up, so we'll look forward to a good state championship.
Excellent, great job. Thank you. Councilman DeFilippo?
Oh, you still doing this?
This is Ann Burkey, you gotta get done.
No, I'm pointing out how long it takes.
With you, I'm not.
About the band. I'm excited. Just on the two hundred and fiftieth thing and the EDC, are you gonna talk a little bit about, I mean, you're gonna get to see this really incredible billboard that's gonna go up, it's gonna say, it's the old, it's the shop local billboard, but now we're incorporating the two hundred and fifty, thanks Sean and the committee, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Fred.
The, the calendar, for instance, you guys really should talk about it. The calendars, every equal page of the calendar next year will have, will be branded for two hundred and fiftieth anniversary stuff, so lots of exciting stuff going on through the EDC, through the two hundred and fifty. Really commend the committee for the work that they've done, they've done. Look, I, I don't know about everybody else on the, on the council, but, but first responders have been to my, they've had to come to my house more than once, and I, I don't know how we would, where we would be without you guys. So from my own personal experience, I couldn't be more grateful for having you and, and the expertise you bring to our town, other towns frankly, I don't think. So just personally, thank you for, for everything you do. November twelfth is the library's gala, tickets are going, I'm, I'm not even sure, you can get tickets here, I mean, you really, I would, if you wanted to go, you better, you better buy your tickets. Starry night, it's just a beautiful evening. The response from the community so far has just been stunning, again, this is the fifth year we've tried to raise money to expand the library, and we're just, we've met with tremendous enthusiasm, the community, it's fantastic.
Here are our, our issue.
And I'll issue your honorees again, a former Judge Ronco, fantastic, and a really, a legacy business in our town, Knight's Automotive, Peyton and Nancy, just fabulous contributors to our community, so, so, and, and Judge Ronco is just fabulous, his, his story, which you'll see, thanks to a video that someone from Sean's, Sean recommended to us was able to help us. So yeah, great night, you should all come. Now finally, finally, you know, there's one very serious thing we're all supposed to do as citizens in this country, vote, 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 so I'm not gonna see you again, but here's what I'm gonna ask you to do, vote, right? You need to vote, and the election's coming up, it's, you got distinctive choices, you have no excuse not to vote, so vote, vote in the election. That's it for me, Mayor.
Early voting has already started?
That's right. There's no much of a difference. Vote, vote, vote.
Councilman Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, just want to start with the Board of Education meeting will be, I believe it's the seventeenth next month, so I'll report back on that. Echo the sentiments of Councilman DeFilippo that, yeah, it gives the first, our first responders as well, and thank you, thank you, thank you for all the hard work you do. Joe, thank you for your service and your tenure here, appreciate that. And last thing, have a safe and happy Halloween, everyone.
Thank you, sir. I too would like to take a second to thank our first responders. Wasn't ignored for my purpose in many ways, shape, or form, I had to talk about them. We always thank you, and the liaison was part of our people forever, twenty-something years, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, so I had to accept my word, we appreciate everything you do, and hopefully when we show you enough of it, too. Thank you.
Mayor, let me just, just one thing on that. I don't know whether people out there actually take the time to realize how much time that these guys have actually put in. It is an astronomical commitment that they put in for the township, and I'm, listen, I gotta cut right to the chase, I cannot believe that they, they, they have to run their own lives, they got their own families, and yet they do all this stuff on the side, and they don't get paid. Okay? So it is just unbelievable. How many calls did you guys do last year?
Total, just about, total calls, a lot of was about a thousand, and then first aid and child, happened, sixteen, sixteen.
Okay, so we're talking sixteen hundred calls above and beyond what they do for their families. It is just, it is, it's an unbelievable feat, and people really need to realize, you know, the commitment and, and what they do for the community. So I echo my fellow council people's comments, but I just wanted to add that on so you can see the magnitude of, of, of what they're dealing with on a, on a regular basis. It's really something stupendous, so congratulations, guys, good job.
Thank you. Mayor Clerk?
Happy anniversary.
Mr. Rice?
Welcome to report.
Thank you. Mr. DiArco, your last time here in Roxbury?
To keep it short, Mayor, if you're on the most.
It's all right.
The inside joke for the audience is I retired from Verona in February. It's been a pleasure to be here, it really has. Your staff, I've said it before, they're really very professional, they're excellent, made my managing here very, very easy. Almost feel guilty getting paid, almost. You were, you receive my weekly report, if there was anything in the report that you'd like to ask about, please do. Your best practices was filed, you've maxed on the scoring, so you will be getting a hundred percent from the state on your.
You're gonna review that next, right?
Yeah. And other than that, unless the council has any questions?
I would like to thank you, you, you made a couple of recommendations that, you know, a lot of times I blow things off for different reasons, I tend to be fiscally conservative, but I liked your grant writing approach with the company that you talked about, and you seem to have been able to show, prove its success there, so I'm very interested in trying that, I just want you to know that. And there are a couple of other things that I'll jump to you by the way, but there have been a couple of recommendations that I really appreciated that you did not need to bring to the table in any way, shape, or form. And we even had some other reviews, stuff done through your professional organizations that haven't cost us anything, so thank you for documenting us for such a short amount of time. Truly, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, I just add a little bit more color also to the, to the appointment of our new, our new township manager, and I want to give some credit to Joe and the extensive search that we conducted nationally for that, to fill that position, but the, the extreme vetting process, which we all paid very close attention to, was, just gave us a level of comfort that made it, made it that much easier in a very difficult time for us to transition, was not a quiet time for us, and, and so I, so I wanna, I wanna, I wanna commend you for that, I want to commend the council also for that process that we went through, it was, it was crisp, it got to the, to the candidate we wanted, and so, and, and with very little downtime in the community, I think the community should understand, so thank you for that, for that search as well as the outcomes.
Mayor, I have been in contact with J.J. a little past week and discussed the spreadsheets that I've pending projects, what stage they're in, so his transition here will be a lot easier.
Excellent, thank you.
He's got the experience, just step right in.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Moves us on to item eight, matters requested referred by council members, managers, attorney and clerk. A, the twenty twenty-five best practices inventory, I think we just heard Joe said we, we scored and we will receive a hundred percent.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to recreation free fees increase, Councilman Hall?
Yes, if, if I could, Mayor, I'd like to invite up Brett Douglas, our recreation director, to answer any questions the council may have, but, but for the council's purposes, this is our yearly review of the recreational fees for the county parks and recreation facilities. This year we had a few modest increases in the version that was provided to the council. This is a direct result of increases in minimum wage, increases in incentive plus fees, increases in referees fees, that's for sure, other things, field costs and other program fees, equipment, things of that nature, shirts, apparel, things, things like that, things keep going up, so based on that, what Brett did and exceptional job on this year, he, he actually highlighted the areas within the document so you can pinpoint exactly the ones that were being increased.
Thank you.
Yeah, it, it, it really was incredibly helpful. He did this also with the Recreation Advisory Committee to make it easier for us to actually have discussions on those topics, so this was reviewed by the Recreation Advisory Committee. Listen, the goal every year, folks, is the same, you know, is, is to create, you know, great services, great recreation programs, be self-sufficient, okay, which we are, and competitive with the surrounding communities. Brett does a good job of benchmarking what we have against our surrounding communities, and as a result, it is good work, you know, we are where we are, and I, just a few notables, I'm just gonna turn it over to Brett, you know, for your review and comments, folks, is number one, you're gonna see a new sport in there, girls' flag football. And this has taken off, like, I just can't believe, I mean, the, the participation levels immediately took, took off, and it was a very successful program. This sport is gonna be introduced in the twenty twenty-eight L.A. Olympics, so it's, it's really taken off nationwide. We've had some great success this year, we've had some really good coaching, so, you know, if you have more questions on that, Brett's here to answer those. And then the second piece that I want to bring up is our new Madison Pickleball facility, took a lot of time, you know, to figure out exactly how we were going to utilize that, and if you have any questions, Brett's here to answer that, so in, in a nutshell, we're self-sufficient, we've been that way for a number of years now. And in addition to that, just so everybody knows, the recreational rentals that we went forward with this year accounted for an additional twenty thousand dollars into the general fund, so we're stable, plus we're adding that additional piece into the general fund. With that, I'll turn it over to Brett for questions.
Thank you, Brett, appreciate it. Again, appreciative of my staff and, and the Recade Advisory Committee to be able to add value to all the things that we do, and now this being our fifth detailed review, we've really honed in on some of the pieces. uh, we've really honed in on some of the pieces, we really, really wanna make sure that we are making sure that are correct. Um, and most of the ones like Fred touched upon are ones that are, where we're paying summer employees, where we're paying staff to oversee the beach or the gates and things of that nature as well, too, so, um, those are our costs that we need to have, uh, transfer onto, uh, to our residents that are using our facilities, so that we are as cost efficient as we can be. Um, when we do get to the pickleball, it's something that's new this year, uh, we modeled it off of the things that we've done for our beach in terms of the scaling for intern, in, internal residents and, and out-of-town residents, to make sure that we are as even as we could be, um, and looked at a variety of different other townships and what they're doing, what their practices are, uh, as they're been a little bit ahead of us in terms of getting these pickleball courts going, which is great that we're in a position that we are now, uh, the work is a little bit done for us already. Uh, so with that being said, uh, I think that the plan that we have in discussion with Steve Sinise and DPW, uh, Rob, Rob Kunkin from Technology, uh, to be able to get us in a place that we are, I, I think is, uh, I think is the right spot, and if there's any questions about it, love to have a discussion if, if, if warranted.
I don't have any questions, I just wanna thank you and the staff for, um, the deep dive per program, looking at to where you, you need to make adjustments necessarily, we need to make them. Um, so thank you for the time spent, um, on this again this year.
You're welcome. It, it, it's fun, it's, it's our life, and we, you know, we are constantly in it, um, it's, you know, you can't, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't make it perfect, but we get as close as we can, which is good.
And, and girls' flag football, you had a super amount of girls sign up.
We had, uh, eighty-eight girls sign up, uh, right now, our win percentage is in the nine-hundred percentage, which is for a first-year program, uh, the volunteer coaches that came out of the woodwork, we had three, four, or five coaches on each of our teams going up against, uh, towns as a travel program that have been established for three, four, or five years, uh, and we come out and we are now winning twenty-four to seven, uh, which is good. You know, that's a, that's a testament to, to the things that our female athletes are doing, um, that they wanna see this continued to go forward. Uh, and discussions are going on with the Board of Ed, uh, about how that can, can exist going forward for our female athletes, which is great.
And you also have a record number of female athletes sign up for field hockey, is that true?
Correct, yes, so this year, past couple of years, our field hockey program has continued to take the necessary strides. Uh, this year, we were able to take a full dive into the travel program for field hockey, uh, to keep us on pace where other townships have been the past couple of years. Um, if you play early in field hockey, just like in some other specialized sports, it does give you an advantage, it's not easy to take a flat surface and hit a sphere, uh, in a correct direction, um, so the more time under tension that you have in that, uh, our female athletes have been able to, uh, have some success as well, too, so we're very proud of that.
Excellent, thank you. Council have any questions about the red fees?
Just, just, it just, just one big huge, uh, shout out to Steve Sinise. Steve shows up at all of our recreation meetings, uh, very, very, very helpful with the, um, the new system we're putting into the pickleball courts, and obviously is, uh, helping to spearhead the, uh, the opportunities with the reimagining of Imagination Station, so, big thanks, Steve.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to item nine, introduction of proposed ordinances. Fifteen dash twenty-five, ordinance to amend chapter thirteen of the revised general ordinance of the Township of Roxbury Land Development Ordinance, Article seven, zoning regulations, by adding a new section thirteen dash seven thirty-nine entitled Highlands Regional Master Plan Conformance. A motion.
Move fifteen twenty-five.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, our second reading on this is November eighteenth. Roll call, Amy?
Councilman Carey.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crowley.
Yes.
Councilman De Filippo.
Yes.
Councilman Hall.
Yes.
Councilman Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Patillo.
Yes. Another introduction of proposed ordinance, sixteen twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the supplement chapter seven traffic of the revised general ordinance of the Township of Roxbury, County of Morris, City of New Jersey, and establishing a no parking zone on the north side of East Maple Dell Avenue during certain hours.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Second reading on this is also November eighteenth, may I have a roll call?
Councilman Carey.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crowley.
Yes.
Councilman De Filippo.
Yes.
Councilman Hall.
Yes.
Councilman Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Patillo.
Yes. Seventeen twenty-five, we are pulling for tonight. We'll revisit that at a later date after further discussion. Brings us to ten, hearing adoption of ordinances on second reading. Eleven dash twenty-five, an ordinance to amend chapter thirteen land development of the code of Roxbury Township, Township of Roxbury, to add houseboats on Lakelakon to prohibited use within the township of Roxbury.
Mayor, move eleven twenty-five, open for vote.
Second. All in favor?
Is that the houseboat one?
Yes.
Uh, I'll do a roll call on that, and, no questions. We wanna say that we're gonna put...
It's open to the public right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We still have to...
Okay.
Does anybody in the public wish to come up and, and be heard on, um, this ordinance and this ordinance alone?
Maybe Mr. Bryce can bring the actual problem, take on this, why beforehand, and might...
I'm gonna get...
So this particular ordinance, one that amends the zoning ordinance, and when you're making a zoning ordinance that has a theoretical classification change, it requires significant notice, especially if it's not identified in the land use master plan. So with this type of ordinance, it's not necessarily a land use ordinance, it's not necessarily something that has to be done through the zoning code. It can actually be, be done through the police, uh, regulations that are adopted by the municipality, the public safety regulations. So at this point in time, I think the recommendation is to have this particular ordinance defeated, so as not to incur any type of unnecessary notice requirements to achieve the goal that the council meeting...
So, so Mr. Bryce, if that's the case, then we, have we closed, we've closed the public?
No, we're still public.
If it is closed, we'll take a vote, but...
Okay, that's fine. We have motion to close, uh, twenty-five to the public?
Is anybody in the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none.
Motion to close, eleven twenty-five.
All in favor?
I... Motion to, would that be canceled?
No, you would just simply do a motion to approve, and if you're not inclined to, to do this, you vote no.
Right, if you... A motion on this ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. This really came out of the Lake Commission, and, and the reason for this is that, um, remember that the lake is, is four towns and two counties? In one of the towns, there were people who were starting to put in houseboats, and, and the lake has no pump-out facility. This is essentially trying to solve the problem of not having people do Airbnbs with houseboats on Lakelakon, where there's no way to, to pump out the boats. So this has been going on for about a year now, we're trying to just conform with the other towns, make sure that if there's gonna be houseboats, they can be done adequately, and they can't right now.
Well, I think we could still take that action, we just have to do it through police, etc., too, so...
That's correct. That's why I'm gonna vote no on this, this ordinance.
Any other discussion? Just kind of... Roll call, Amy?
Councilman Carey.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry.
We're gonna bring it up for the...
I got it backwards, sorry.
Deputy Mayor Crowley.
No.
Councilman De Filippo.
No.
Councilman Hall.
No.
Councilman Riley.
No.
Mayor Patillo.
No. Moving on to second reading, fourteen twenty-five, ordinance to amend chapter twenty-two, the revised general ordinance of the Township of Roxbury to prohibit the possession of tobacco products in schools or public properties by persons under the age of twenty-one.
I'll make the motion.
Hold second.
This is opening to the public, all in favor?
Right.
Does anybody in the public wish to be heard on this ordinance and this ordinance alone?
I'll make my call.
Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Michael McColligan, ADR Street, County of New Jersey, what sort of precautions if the kids are down? Is the police handling that, or...
It is an excellent line. Mr. Bryce, do you wanna give the official?
Well, they'd be subject to a fine, they'd be subject to a sentence, and a fine, uh, up to violations worth a fine of one hundred dollars.
Anybody else in the public on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to close.
Check. Uh, make a motion, all in fa, I'm sorry, all in favor?
I, I, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any, any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Carey.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crowley.
Yes.
Councilman De Filippo.
Yes.
Councilman Hall.
Yes.
Councilman Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Patillo.
Yes. Item eleven, introduction and adoption of resolutions.
If I may, I'll move twenty twenty-five dash two ninety-nine, I'll move twenty twenty-five dash three hundred through, through twenty twenty-five dash three oh five.
Second. Any discussion? Councilman Riley?
Uh, the two, uh, uh, tax court stipulations, uh, the most discussed executive... That I don't know, I wasn't hearing it. I, I did read out a benefit, I need some just one clarification.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Carey.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crowley.
Yes.
Councilman De Filippo.
Yes.
Councilman Hall.
Yes.
Councilman Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Patillo.
Yes. Personnel changes or none, communications, October seventeenth and twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, any discussion on those two?
I'm on the same as Mr. Riley, we'll just move on.
Okay. This brings us to fourteen, our second public portion, is anybody in the public wish to be heard on any topic? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, this is on any topic.
Uh, hello.
Hello.
I'm Christopher. Uh, I wrote, I live on Lewis Road, uh, planning by Nixon. Uh, I've been working, uh, starting my project, uh, I've been working with the Roxbury Library with this. Uh, one thing that I would like some information on, uh, is, uh, they asked me to make a area, uh, in the back portion of their parking lot, uh, redo it. Uh, one of the requests was to make it more handicap accessible, uh, one of the things that I noticed that needed to be done with this is to add a slant, uh, from the pavement, uh, up to the sidewalk of it, uh, and I was wondering, uh, who I would have to talk to to have that arranged.
Who to make this, this slant?
We just did.
Are you correct with DPW's Steve Sinise is sitting right in front of you? You can reach out to him, and he can give you the specs and everything you would need to do, accomplish that.
There was another thing, uh, to this, uh, there is no crosswalk, uh, from these two areas, uh, and it is in the middle of the parking lot, and when I was talking to the members of the library, they had mentioned that there probably should be a crosswalk from one, from the main library grounds to this secondary, uh, back.
And this is all on, on library property?
Yes.
Do you know what I was talking about?
Yeah, a, absolutely, it's a, it's a great Eagle Scout project, Steve can give him the specs to do that, so, so, these are all very helpful things, but I want...
Looking forward to it.
If you run into any trouble at all...
Call Steve.
Call Steve. Seriously, well, just keep us posted, keep us posted.
Mr. Mangano has our contact, anything you need, he can get a hold of us.
Your looks, man.
All right, anybody else in the public wish to be heard on any topic? Seeing none, I'll close, public, uh, as we heard before, we do have an executive session, correct?
That is correct. This will be a resolution authorizing an executive session, depending upon a real legal litigation for the match.
For the House.
A resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Roxbury and the County of Morris, New Jersey, authorizing conference of the Township Council with the public excluded. Whereas it is deemed appropriate, Township Council discuss the matters herein after mention without the presence of the public in accordance with the provisions of RS ten, Form four dash twelve B, being section D of the Open Public Meeting Act. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Roxbury, matters relating to attorney-client privilege and litigation, affordable housing shall be discussed by the Township Council without the presence of the public.
Thank you. A motion?
I'll move.
All in favor? We're gonna go into the back conference room, councilmen go into the back conference room, we will not be taking any action.